Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us today. Today, I have the pleasure of having State Representative Christopher Benjamin and State Representative Dottie Joseph that represent us here in North Miami, in particular, Bishop Street. So tonight, your elected officials will give me detailed information on the different bills and initiatives they have worked upon to make North Miami a better place. Some of these bills have passed while others are in committee. Please be open-minded, and I look forward to this discussion. So senators, let's begin. Again, I'm going to introduce to you again Senator, excuse me, not Senator yet, State Representative Christopher Benjamin. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. And people are speaking so many titles over my life. Senator, Congressperson, I'm taking them all. That's okay. It's so funny, because I'm the junior legislator up here at the table today. But I think I had a pretty good session here at the House legislative session. We did, we were able to get some bills passed, at least at the House level. And we have some bills that will lay over for this session and we hope to get onto the governor's desk. One of the bills that we did pass during this legislative session was my bill for veterans who are 100% disabled. And it allows veterans who do not receive 100% of their education paid for by the government, the balance of that to be paid for by the Florida government. So what we've said to our disabled veterans is that we got your back. So that if you are 100% disabled, and you come home, and you're trying to get yourself reeducated, and you're going to college, and for whatever reason, you don't get 100% from the military to pay for your education, Florida will pick up the balance on the tab. And so we were able to get that passed through the House. And we are confident that during this next session, we'll be able to get it onto the governor's desk. Another bill that we were able to pass during this session that we are very confident about for this next session is allowing the state representatives and the state senators to be able to go to our jails, our county jails, just like we're able to go to our state prisons, to be able to go to our county jails and to see what the condition is in our county jails, see how they're treating the people in which they're to supervise, and see what the conditions that they're living in. So that a lot of the complaints that we get about corrections often stems from what's happening in our county jails. So we want to be able to pop up and see what's going on in real time. And so we got that bill passed through the House this time, and we're confident that we'll get it on the governor's desk in our next session. And so, and that's how it's been for me in this particular legislative session. We were able to get bills passed through the House. We were stalled out, although we had good movement in the Senate. We didn't have enough time to get them done. But we are confident that going into the next session, we'll be able to get those things done. And we're going to talk about, I know in the next session, we're going to talk about some of the bills, other bills that passed through that we wish didn't pass through this session. Things that hinder us in our rights, such as our voting rights, such as our right to protest in a free assembly. And we'll talk about those shortly. And with that, I'm going to pass the mic to the senior legislator up here, Representative Dottie Joseph.
It's a pleasure to be with everyone tonight. Thank you, Madam Councilwoman, for inviting us. As you've heard, my name is Dottie Joseph. For the phonetically inclined, because I was born in Haiti, it's properly pronounced Dots Joseph. But if you can't hang, Dottie is the pre-approved alternative. It's all good. So what I want to do, I'll walk you through some bills that passed. And we're going to touch on some of the landscape of just some larger bills beyond just the ones that we ourselves dealt with, and some that didn't pass, right? So let me start with the ones that passed. So one of the bills that I passed this year that made it through both houses unanimously, actually, is one that allows victims to legally report their abusers who are contacting them in violation of the no-contact order. So how Florida works is it's a two-party consent state. So you can't just go around reporting people without their permission. You have to get their permission before you start, you know, recording your own conversations, for example. So what would happen is, some people, whether it's because of a domestic violence situation, dangerous violence, stalking, you name it, their abuser, who the judge had already told them not to contact this person, would harass them. And they would do what, you know, you think is okay to do, and record it, right? And you get it as he said, she said, because you could not use that as evidence. So what we did is we made it so that that could be used legally as evidence. It's also protected victims who do make those recordings. Because sometimes what would happen is, once the abuser found out that there was a recording, then they would extra abuse the person and file charges, or try to get the charges filed when they were the ones doing something wrong. So this rectified that wrong. So that's one bill that got passed. I had one that, and that was, if you're curious about the bill number, HB 583. There's also HB 183. So one of the priorities that I had going into this session and to continue significantly next session is to tackle healthcare disparities. That's something that's significant, and we saw it particularly pronounced during the time of COVID-19. And that's something that impacts not just black people, not just Hispanic people, but anybody of color, but also people who are just economically disadvantaged. A lot of the social determinants of health revolve around poverty, which may get harder for certain individuals to get the kind of care that they need. All of that's better with the Affordable Care Act. Speaking of which, if you are one of the few people who are still not covered, there's still a little time, thanks to President Biden, that has been reopened for enrollment. And I think that in a moment here, it goes through the end of this move. Exactly. But if you're curious, you just contact my office in the legislature for sure. But that is still available at healthcare.gov. Anyway, that's my little plug, I'm going to keep moving. But the point is, it's important for us to have a healthy community. So over the course of the pandemic, I worked with both of these awesome elected officials and lots of folks throughout Miami-Dade County to make sure, whether inside or outside of the district, that everybody had access to the testing that they needed, to the vaccinations that you needed, right? And if you have just questions about what the vaccine means, if you're hesitant, if you want more information, we're happy to connect with people to walk you through those kinds of things, because it's important. And we don't want to force anything on anyone, but if you want the information, we want to make sure that you have access to it. So what that particular bill did, HB 183, is it empowers the Office of Minority Health to collect data and do a couple of things to really get the information we need to tackle healthcare disparities in Florida. That's that bill. Now, there was a larger police reform bill that passed, which was quite a peculiar task. It passed both houses unanimously. And what that bill is, so I'm going to put it in context. So after the murder of George Floyd, I put together a Black Lives Matter roundtable. And that included over 50 organizations in Miami-Dade and Mar-a-Rosa County, and law enforcement, and we just got everybody to the table. And we centered the young people. Yep. He's like, I'm sorry. And we centered the young people who were part of the fuel of the movement. Because a lot of times, you know, these ideas are top-down. I'm very community-centered. What does the community actually mean, right? And come and listen to the young people, listen to, not young people. We had some of the more usual suspects. I say suspects, but like our Freedom Fighters, I should say more accurately, like the NAACP, the ACLU, also at the table. We had Black Lives Matter, Dream Defenders. We had lots of law enforcement agencies that participated. And we all pulled our heads together to come up with ideas to address not only police brutality, but also what are some other things that we can do to dismantle structural racism within our criminal justice system. From those ideas, we took it to, and put together a small working group of lawyers in South Florida comprised of the Will E. D. Ferguson Law Association, the Witness Charity Black Women Lawyers Association, the Haitian Lawyers Association, Cripian Lawyers Association, T.J. Reddick, Franklin Cunningham, some folks from the ACLU and the National Black Prosecutors Association. Put our heads together and ciphered, like go through those ideas, pull out some of the best ones, the ones that we thought were viable. Some are at the state level, some at the federal level, some at the local level. And present them to our colleagues. So that was something that the Florida legislative Black Caucus kind of led through a colleague of mine. So those were some ideas. We also had colleagues working out of Orlando. You know, one of our Simra, we call her Simra, was organizing things through the Democratic Caucus. We also had, even down here in the 305, Uncle Luke and T. Angeles Sears had some ideas that we also put to the table in conjunction with the Miami-Dade Black Affairs and Justice Board, of which I used to serve on. So all of these ideas, we presented it to our colleagues, and you had many of the things to choose from. Whatever people wanted to file, we filed. From those, so let me bring it back to just the ones that I filed. So one was a duty to intervene. So what we saw happening with George Floyd, any other situation like that, where there are other officers observing one doing something that's not appropriate, this would impose a duty to intervene. In addition to that, there's a duty to render medical aid. If you remember during the trial, there was a paramedic who was there, and she testified about wanting to, whatever. So this puts into place, into law, a duty to render medical aid by law enforcement, but, you know, in accordance with their ability. We're not expecting them to go out there and perform surgery necessarily. That's not in their capacity. So a duty to render a medical aid, and of course, data. Data is particularly important. That's something that we were able to revolve, like all coalesce around. So we looked for things that we can get bipartisan support on. And we championed those. Some of those came in the form of training, some of those came in the form of policies. Now, I will say this, in Miami-Dade County, we have some of the more progressive policies when it comes to these SOPs, standard operating procedures for law enforcement in the entire state. But that's not true for the rest of the state. So we wanted to get a standard across the board. Beyond those that I put in, that were my bills that made it into a larger omnibus bill, we also had things like setting a minimum age for arrests, which is significant, because we didn't have that before. And we put things in place. You're shaking your head. I'm going to let you add it, and we're going to continue the conversation until we have a free flowing. Since you're shaking your head, that tells me you're thinking of something.
No, just that, you know, that the, what the bill represented was a true compromise of ideals, because there were things that we wanted in the bill that we weren't able to get in the bill. And so while Representative Joseph is talking about the success that we had, you know, we didn't have some things that we thought were important. Just, just on the aspect of this minimum age, it wasn't bad, because, you know, we got a minimum age limit. So now the police can't go around arresting kindergarteners anymore. So that's a victory in and of itself. But for me, I can't, I can't arrest them.
We shouldn't.
Because at seven, that means a second grader can still get arrested. A second grader.
The minimum age is seven, I'm sorry.
The minimum age is seven.
We had proposed, eight years from twelve, there was a point, it was eleven, but that's where we were unfortunately able to get consistent. So something was, so something was, so this is part of the sausage-making that is unfortunately what we have to encounter. And, and, you know, if I'm speaking frankly, that's what happens when you have people who don't get the issues, don't, don't understand the significance of it. The entire Black Caucus would have preferred that it had been at least twelve. That's what we wanted. But we were at an impasse there. So it was either that or nothing. So facing those things, you know, you got to be practical. And that's a start, because then you could amend it to get it to another place. And hopefully, we will have people with the political courage to grasp that and understand the significance of it. And there's, there's a lot more that needs to be done. But to put that in the context, we also passed HB 1, which I renamed to Hate Bill 1. Because basically, what it does is it limits and puts significant penalties on our right to peacefully assemble and exercise our right to freedom of speech, which is amazing in these United States that we have a law like this. This is the kind of stuff we see in dictatorships and stuff in Central and South America, and Russia, you know, you just thought what happened. Sure, so a little bit more of what HB 1 does. It puts severe penalties on things that were already illegal in terms of what you can do when you're protesting. Actually, let me hold it on to the worst parts of it. So the worst part is, in an otherwise peaceful protest, you can have some outside agitators. And we know that there are documented cases of outside people coming in, paid by whoever from where. We know where some of them come from. Anyway, the point is, they come and they can do something to make it more violent. They can break windows, they can do something else that has nothing to do with everybody else who's there. So 99.9% of everybody there is peaceful. One agitator comes, now everybody is subject to liability and to be held without bond and charged with this crime, which did not previously exist. Now, in addition to that, things that are already illegal, we didn't need it, they just increased the penalties. In addition to that, if you remember back in, during the Charlottesville, everything that was going on there with the protests and the counter-protests, and you had these young people who went out to support and affirm that Black Lives Matter in the face of these white supremacist terrorists with the tiki torches. And there was one young woman named Heather Hare who was there, and this man literally drove through the crowd and ran her over, and she died. You would think that our laws would protect the victim and make it so that that person would be punished for doing something so heinous. But no, not in Florida. Under the current administration and, you know, the current people, you know, ruling in the legislature, because we served with a minority party, they sought in their infinite lack of wisdom to instead protect the person who runs through the person in the crowd and provide immunity for such actions. And he, it's just a say something, someone pass the mic, but like, it was like straight. Those are, I proposed an amendment to take it out. They just, they were not trying to hear it. So we pass the mic.
Is that because the person protesting is considered an agitator, and the person driving through is not?
So the messaging around that, the messaging around that was that supposedly the crowd itself was going to be riotous, and you felt unsafe driving through. Instead of going around the crowd, you, you know, anyway.
It requires that the people who, because one of the aspects of the bill that they made illegal is to block traffic. And so what they've said is that if you feel like your life is in danger, then, and fleeing, you can basically run people over. But the fear that I had when this was coming through was that it would be, it really would be weaponized by people who should weaponize it. And I saw, I like to float through social media, and I like to see what my colleagues are doing on social media. And one of our colleagues on the other side had an issue with regards to the conflict that's happening right now in the Middle East with Israel and Palestine. And what he said to a person on social media was that there was a current rally with Palestinian supporters. And he told a Jewish supporter to go down to the rally with their car. And if you should get surrounded, go ahead and run them over, because we just passed a bill that will protect you anyway. And so that was my fear, that there are aspects of this bill that would be weaponized in a way that it wasn't talked about on the floor of the House. And so it's very unfortunate. And I tell people all the time that I had an opportunity in my career to speak with a lot of police officers. And sometimes the police officers, the bad apples, will tell you things like, you may, in this arrest, you may beat the charge, but you're not going to beat the ride. And what they mean is that, you know, I'm still going to cause you to be a criminal, because I'm going to take you through the criminal justice process. You're going to get photographed, you're going to get fingerprinted. And you may ultimately win, but your, all your data is now in a criminal justice database. So for all intents and purposes, you're still a criminal. Because you can be found where all other criminals can be found. And so you could be at a rally peacefully protesting, outside agitator comes in, the police then come and do a sweep of everybody. So they get the good and the bad. And so the bad, so the good suffer along with the bad. And these are things that we talked about, but it seemed to be no concern about things like, things like that. And that was an hypocrisy that was tough to digest during, during session. And so those are some of my pet peeves. I'll handle my bad.
So where does that leave us? Citizens should not protest any longer? I mean, we're...
And that's a good point. No, we continue to resist. We continue to resist at every turn. Our predecessors, the people who came before us to ensure that we would have these rights, they were faced with bad laws too. And they persisted anyway. So we persist anyway, and you'll have people that will come to your aid. You'll have lawyers that will be there for you, that will defend you in face of these bad laws. So, no, we don't run, we don't shrink, we stand to the moment. This is a test of all of us in this moment. We stand to the moment, and we persist. And we will get through this too. What we do, what I do is I call on our local officials, I call on our local law enforcement to understand the ramifications of how they enforce this bill. And to truly use the greatest amount of discretion when you're talking about how you enforce this bill. Because it's gotten past us. It's gotten past us. Seventy-eight to forty-two, that's what we faced in Tallahassee. So we couldn't stop it from becoming law. But locally, you can decide how you enforce it.
So let me unpack that part. So as someone with a background as an attorney that advises municipalities, there are a couple of additional shackles on municipalities and their ability to counterbalance some of this. One of which is, there's a block of reducing the budget for your law enforcement budget. So that means even if you do a cut across the board, not just the law enforcement, you could still be liable under this bill and have to have the governor basically review your budget, which is out of control. That's one. Another element of that is, let's say, your local elected officials wanted to do something and say, hey, you know, don't give this to the law enforcement. There's also a provision there that waives sovereign immunity for local government that wants to interfere with, exactly, with the ability of law enforcement to provide protection or whatever they want to do during a riot.
Right?
So even when you have people who can do something and say, no, we're not doing that, which we've seen in other parts of the state, Florida's taken a particularly partisan and unnecessarily political decision, because we haven't had those issues in Florida. Whatever it is that they claim they're trying to address, that's not, that's not what's going on here. And the messaging has been that, you know, post-January, the January 6th insurrection, this is somehow tied to that. Actually, it's the antithesis of that. This was proposed by the governor and the president of the Senate and the Speaker of the House during the summer, well before the January 6th insurrection. So we already know what's really going on. It's rather unfortunate. But, you know, I just reiterate that elections have consequences. And that's not a partisan state, though, because Republicans suffered too. This is, this is something that Floridians actually, we need to unite around, regardless of political party, for different reasons. But this is not the country that my parents escaped here to come to. This is not, this is not America. This is, anyway, SB 90. And then we'll take, we'll open up for more questions. I know we're touching on a lot of stuff here. SB 90 is Florida's contribution to the Republican onslaught on voting rights in these United States right now. SB 90 reduces the timeframe that supervisors of election can make available drop boxes. So in Miami-Dade County, for example, as soon as the vote-by-mail ballots are mailed out, they make the drop boxes available. Because if you're one of those people who's quickly want to get it out of the way, the drop box is available for you. And they make it so that now that's, the supervisor of elections cannot do that. It's illegal. And if they do it, they are subject to a $25,000 fine. They have to wait till early voting starts to make it there. Now, another thing we observed is whether it's because of the weather, because elections are in August, prime hurricane season, or because they just made a miscalculation and they need to make adjustments in voting locations, they sometimes add voting locations during early voting. And if you want supervisors of election to have that flexibility, well, no, not, not, not this particular legislature that's not run by us. They want to make it so that you cannot do that. They took away that flexibility. Where the funding has fallen short, they made it so that supervisor election can't accept private funds, which was critical during the COVID, the pandemic, because they needed PPE and all these things that were not in their budget. So they applied for grants that they won, but now these folks have said that that's illegal. You cannot give people water or medicine or whatever it is in line, because they claim that that's election hearing and campaigning, which is foolishness. They also, I mean, I keep going, but it was just a lot of, just not good stuff to try to make it harder for people to vote. You want to add something? Because I've got more.
I know you do, very well. But when it's all said, another question. Once again, B, so what do we do as a result of having this bill passed? And so my answer is the same as my other answer was, and that is, we persist. We still show up to vote in droves. We still use absentee ballots to vote. And we do so more than ever. In this last election, more than ever, we found the value of the mail-in ballot. So we continue to use it. And we continue to call their hand. So we're going to continue to vote, we're going to continue to vote in large numbers, we're going to continue to use the mail-in ballot. And we will confound them, just like our ancestors did. They were faced with anti-voting bills, they were faced with anti-voting tactics. And what did they do? They voted. They stood in long lines, they stood water hoses and dog bites. They endured, and if they could endure under the conditions that they did, surely we can endure under these conditions. And so I say persist. And once again, you'll have lawyers that will continue to fight for your rights that will be there to call their hand when they do things that they shouldn't do. But this, this is yet another bad bill that seventy-eight to forty-two, we had little ability to do anything about in terms of preventing it from becoming, from becoming law. So again, I ask people like our Secretary of Elections to be creative in how you look at enforcing this particular law. Look, be creative as you look to shrink the negative impact that the bill will have. And I think if we all work, all work it together, we can lessen those negative impacts, and we can still have historical turnout, and we can still get people in office that can work with us and that will put forth legislation that is good for the people of Florida, for all the people of Florida. So that's, that's my take on that. Once again, handing back over to Representative Joseph.
Thank you for that. I mean, that's, at the end of the day, whatever the obstacle is, you just have to figure out a way to work through it. We need to need like water. If you can't go around, if you just go around it, under it, over it, somehow you're going to make it through. So in terms of funding, half of my appropriations made it through, half did not. You will be pleased to know that the North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizens, which is a project that provides home-delivered meals seven days a week to the elderly and at-risk residents who are facing malnutrition and hunger, that was funded and not vetoed this time. Woo! Maybe, I hope so. Yeah, so, in spirit, even if you didn't need it, because you're there with us. So, you know, some things made it through, some things didn't. It's, you know, I'm one of those people, I'm fighting anyway, whether you're going to veto my stuff or not, I'm fighting for what's right. And I think we need more of that. So in terms of other things that were sponsored that didn't quite make it through this or last time, I also sponsored a bill that would have Florida ratify the ERA, which is the Equal Rights Amendment. And all it says is that... And all it says is that men and women will be treated equally under the law. Um, fortunately, Virginia passed it in their last session, so Florida didn't need to be the next state. Um, so that's teed up to see if that can be another amendment to the US Constitution. Uh, in addition to that, there was legislation to, whether it's pay family leave or, um, to protect women from pregnancy discrimination. Those things were not considered for various, um, unfortunately partisan reasons, and it's not a partisan issue. Um, can I ask you one more? Just for context, we pass like over a hundred bills just about every session. So we're not going through everything. If there's any, I'm going to pause now, and if it's okay with you, Madam Councilwoman, we can open up for questions?
Sure. Well, actually, let me, let me start with a question myself.
Sure. So there's a lot.
So I, I noticed that you didn't talk about that. First of all, thank you so much for your fight in Tallahassee. Thank you for all of the things that you do to represent us here in Florida, in particular District Three. Um, one of the topics that you didn't talk about here, but that is, is, is there are two topics here that are really concerning to our residents, and that is affordable housing. And so has that been refunded, the Sodiskey Fund? Has it been, has it been refunded? What's going on with that? Is there an opportunity there? And I have another question after you answer that.
So, uh, this, this session, so last session, we fully funded for the first time in like over a decade, the Sodiskey Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, and thereafter, the governor decided he wanted to veto some of that money, then realized it would get done without crying, and tried to backfill it with some, um, care as I play. Fast forward this past session, uh, it was not fully funded. They did try to sweep it initially. We, the, the Democratic Party, um, fought back hard and stakeholders who are not Democrat or Republican, again, the people, the people get it, like, cause we're all suffering. We all, and, and why do I say we, maybe I should put that in even more context? Because the people with, which we serve, many of them are millionaires. So these are issues that they hear about, kind of, sort of, but may not, may not fully grasp the significance of it. Um, you know, whether it's a refusal, just philosophically, to expand Medicaid, uh, that would help so many people in Florida and be such a financial advantage to us. And literally just leaving money in federal matching dollars on the table when people need it. This is something that, you know, anyway, back to affordable housing. So we pushed back hard and they got it more than where it was. Um, it was significantly higher than what was proposed in the initial budget. So what we do is we go through the different cycles. There are subcommittees for different parts of the budget. It goes through a process. There's a preliminary budget that's proposed. Before that, the governor requests his budget. And then we go through the, the process. We argue, we debate, we negotiate, and then we get to what ends up being the budget. And then the, the governor gets another crack at it, right, deciding what he's going to veto through his line out of veto power. Um, so it's higher than what was initially proposed by the Republicans. Um, but is it fully funded this year? Unfortunately not. Um, and, and we know the need for it, so that's the answer.
Another issue that we have in our district, um, Septic to, uh, to sewer. Um, can you just elaborate and talk about that on the state side? How can we have, especially District Three, um, in the northeast third quarter? We have some sections, but overall, we are sewer, um, city, yeah, sewer. But there are some pockets that need to, to convert from Septic to, uh, to sewer, so our...
Sure. So this is an interesting issue because it's one that impacts, uh, lots of pockets throughout the entire state. Uh, and the Department of Environmental Protection is charged with a lot of that. Now, this is something I got funding in the budget, um, last year for North Miami and Miami Shores. Cause there are lots of little cities in, in this northeast border that are experiencing the same issue. It's one that we could fight for quite some time, but then the governor vetoed it. And then, so I had a conversation with him, to the governor, like, yo, what's going on? You need to do something. They're, yeah, we need a more comprehensive solution. Well, fine, give me a more comprehensive solution. I thought that was going to come through this time. It did not come through this time. But, um, the, the word is, the governor has set aside a fund, um, that cities can apply for, uh, that will help with Septic Sewer in different capacities. So now I'm working with my municipalities through their staff, um, from Miami Dade County to the City of North Miami and several other cities and villages in between, to make sure that they're doing the necessary steps to apply to that fund so that they can get those funds. Because the legislature made a decision that they were not going to fund those projects across the board, Democrat, Republican, or otherwise.
Sorry, just to clarify, you're saying that we can actually apply for those funds now?
Yes. That's exactly what I'm saying.
So I'm sure that my staff is aware of that.
Well, not, not your, your staff, but yes, city staff.
Right, the initiation is what I need to say.
Correct. Yes, so they, they are, they should be. Um, in the past, we'd had conversations about it. Um, so all of that is starting to happen. Um, so that's what we're looking to do.
So no, not in the budget, but another agency that will allow us, hopefully, to get the fund invested into, you know, those issues.
Anybody have a question? I think there's a few more important questions, like, uh, okay, um...
First, I want to apologize for riding late and kind of, I didn't realize that he was not in. And so I, I'm sorry for interrupting earlier, but, um, I did just have a question. I mean, one of the things that happened in the last election cycle, you know, like the national election cycle, there's been a lot of disenfranchised voters, especially, I felt like there's a lot of target of particular voters who's trying to encourage people just not to vote. Encourage advocacy, encourage, you know, dis- disempower people by convincing them that their voices don't matter. I mean, what kind of fight can we create to really let people know that their vote matters? We need everybody to come out of the hole every time, you know? What is it that we can do? Because with all of these lawsuits being put up against voters, you know, if you're already feeling like, oh, my vote doesn't matter anyway, and now I have a shorter window to vote for polls, and now, you know, what, there, I feel like there needs to be a switch, like, of positivity. So something that brings people back to the table and feels, that helps people feel like they're worth that. What is that we can do?
That's why you have some questions for the individuals looking online. Would you care if I asked that question and you could answer that?
Right, so the question basically is that there are certain groups that are, uh, looking to keep people at home, keep people from voting. They, they are looking to encourage advocacy. And, and they do that in messaging. And then they do it in, in how they, how they talk about voting. And so we have to attack, we have to attack it with counter messaging. And then some of the messaging that you hear from, uh, the legislators who passed SB ninety was that we're not making it, uh, harder to vote. We're making it harder to commit fraud. But the counter messaging says that you're, you're making it, still making it harder to vote. Voting shouldn't be hard. Voting should be easy. It's what we do, is how we elect our leadership. We are a representative of democracy. So the thing that, the tool that we use to garner that representation is voting. And so we should make that as easy as possible in this free country. And we are the leaders of the world. So we should be the model of how to have elections that are easy for the populace to vote. And so that's, that's some of the messaging, uh, that we want to have that, that's out there, is that, and if it wasn't important, hear me on this. If it wasn't important for you to vote, they wouldn't go through these links to stop you from voting. They wouldn't be looking to make it harder for you to vote if they really believe that your vote didn't matter. The fact that they're doing this should tell you that your vote matters. So we need you to vote. Get off the couch, get out to the lines, and vote. Fill out your absentee ballot and vote. Vote, vote, vote.
No, it just seems though, we're in 2021 and we are still standing in long lines. Everything else has progressed to automation, digital. I can do everything else on my phone except vote. So in terms of making things convenient, yes, you know, what we should do is what you alluded to earlier. Like our ancestors did, stood the heat, the rain, everything else, then that's something that we should do. But right now, it just seems as though, as, uh, this lady mentioned, there, there's so much African community, it's like, what do I vote for? It doesn't matter. Nothing's changed. You just told us that we have seventy-eight forty-two in the House. You're not going to win, so why vote? Why are you up there fighting? We want you to continue to fight, but you know you're fighting a losing battle if you don't have the majority in the House.
So we can get seventy-eight forty-two on the other side?
Right, so by voting.
By voting.
By voting. But I think when people don't see any movement in initiatives, yes, you can have all these, these bills that we brought forward, X, Y, Z number of them pass. But the ones that impact that person on my block, for example, if it's something that I need on my block. If there's a, a bill that's for flooding, flooding is an issue for me. So if that's in Tallahassee, I can't get it passed, you can't get it passed, then why, why fight? So I think that's where people now have just come to a point of just, I'm retired. People are sick and tired. This last election with, um, Barack Obama won. Everybody was out in droves because there was something that they could, uh, uh, associate with, identify with. I believe that was one of the reasons. Plus, his message was awesome. But now it's like, why? You have a whole, we've won an election, we still fighting. You have people still saying that the election was rigged. People still believe that it's rigged. You know, is it rigged? It's rigged because we got out and used our mail-in ballot balance to, I, I vote by mail-in. I did that way before COVID. Long time ago, because I didn't want to stand in lines. But then people don't believe that the ballot will be counted if it's mailed in. Guess what? It was counted. Democrats won. You know, it's, it's just, I don't know, it's just a tough, tough, uh, tough, tough hole to, to tear. It's, it's rough. I don't know.
It is very rough. We just have to put it in context. Um, you touched on a lot of things. I'm going to try to answer both questions, um, put in pieces. So you talked about voter discouragement, right? And, um, the groups that are doing that. We need to think about who those groups are and what do they stand to benefit, right? So let's, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it, actually, I'm gonna take it from an international perspective first. Um, it is well documented that Russia, uh, initiated multiple campaigns to discourage voters from engaging. Why do they stand to benefit that? I'm not going to answer that question now. I mean, I'm going to put them out there as rhetorical questions. Uh, because they have, um, it serves their interests for that purpose. So when, when less people vote, um, the, the, the persistent Republicans tend to come out on top. When actually, when more just people across the board vote, um, then Democrats tend to come out on top. Particularly in Florida, but that's the case in many other states too. Because the policies tend to be more responsive to people across the board regardless of the political party. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it. So even with the SB ninety law that we just discussed, um, that also impacts Republicans, right? It doesn't just target Democrats. It's one that they're willing to sacrifice their own votes. Because philosophically, what they're concerned with is maintaining power regardless of what the people want. Because they, they have no interest in what the people have to say. What do I have to back that up? Well, we look at some of the initiatives that we pass. For example, um, raising the minimum wage. Floridians, Democrat, Republican, regardless, support that. The Equal Rights Amendment, people want men and women to be treated, support that. Um, you know, medical marijuana, support that. Reenfranchising felonies, support that. Across political party lines, expanding Medicaid, support that. So when we're looking at stuff that people actually care about, affordable housing, support that. But the people who are in charge right now are supporting a small group of interests that fund their campaigns, that fund their businesses, that they have whatever kind of relationships with. And when I say special interests, not all special interests are bad. So specifically the ones that are counter the needs of the people. Who stands to gain from a wound from, you know, fill in the blank thing that's bad for us? Cause you can literally fill in the blank, uh, unfortunately. And, you know, the more power they're able to concentrate in that way and away from the hands of the people, whether the Democrat or otherwise, then the better it is for them. As far as the disinformation campaign that we're seeing right now, you talked about, you know, the election and who won and who didn't win. I mean, it's clear who won. The, the question is, um, you have a palpable manipulation, um, of a segment of the population by people who stand to gain by losing. Right now, we have people advocating for a coup. What do I mean by that? They're like, oh, why can't we just do what they did in Myanmar? Seriously? Like, for real, for real? That's what people came to this country to do.
I know what seventy-four million people felt that way.
And, 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 and they're going to, because we're operating in these echo chambers, meaning they're just watching Fox News. And Fox News is telling them, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not speaking fully on Fox News. I don't, I don't watch Fox News like that, so I'm not going to tell you what all that they say. The few times that I have watched recently, um, it's reinforcing a lot of the disinformation and, and the false information that leaves people confused. And what happens is growing up, whether it's because of religion, um, or your background, you, you tend to believe the people who reinforce whatever your idea is. And again, this is not a Democrat or Republican thing. Unfortunately, this new Republican Party is becoming that because the few forces that have pushed back have been severely punished, ostracized, et cetera, when they do speak up for the truth. Um, when you have a Republican senator standing up and saying that this, the former president, um, committed a treason act not only against this country, but violating their oath to these United States, that is significant. And it cannot be understated, nor should it ever be forgotten. But these are the kinds of things that lead into, uh, what ends up being a failed state in the context of international politics. So I'm going to just stop right there.
Just, 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 just one quick, just one quick adding, is that we have to recognize the, the schemes when we see them. When I argued this, when I argued SB ninety on the floor, I gave a little history of our state and where we have been in terms of voter suppression and the ways in which historically Florida has suppressed the vote of a minority. And, and one of those ways was the poll tax. And, and poll taxes did not target any particular person. The poll tax applied to everybody. And so if you were poor and white and couldn't read, it still affected you. Or if you couldn't afford the tax, it still affected you. But they were willing to sacrifice those few folks because they knew that it would impact us greater. So you will see something like, we're going to, uh, change how you do mail-in voting. And we know that it will affect some folks greater than it will affect other folks. So it seems benign until you really understand how it's being implemented in the history of it. And so we need to be able to call those things out for what they are.
Thank you. So I, I just wanted to clarify again to those watching online because as a councilwoman, everybody knows that I'm elected in this nonpartisan race. And you're hearing a lot of partisan persons here. So I just want to, um, no, 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 I just want to explain this, that I am elected, um, as nonpartisan. Anyone can vote for me. But our state representatives are, are, are elected in a partisan way. And the two elected officials that represent us are Democrats. And so this is why you keep hearing them, because I know you just had an election and I just want people to understand that this is why, that you're hearing them. And so that means, more than likely, that means that most of the people that live in our area are Democrats. And so more than likely, that's why you have the representation. So for anyone listening, you can understand that if you were not servicing Republicans or independents, anyone alike, but this, they're just discussing, um, on a partisan level, what it is that they're doing in Tallahassee and how they're fighting for the masses that live here in North Miami. So just wanted to integrate that, um, into our discussion. And while I've got, um, infrastructure, 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 what can you do for us here in the city of North Miami for infrastructure? Anyone?
Always passing the wire there.
By the way, our city is almost a hundred years old, so we need it.
So I mean, in terms of infrastructure dollars, okay. Uh, so I've sponsored legislation in the past to help North Miami with infrastructure. Uh, so I've sponsored legislation in the past to help North Miami with infrastructure. Your governor tends to veto it. Um, but what we can do is look at different ways that some of the projects dovetail with what agencies are funding for. So I'm talking about state level dollars. You all hope and seek federal dollars, right? So, uh, I believe your federal representative in this area is Congresswoman Wilson. So that's an avenue. Uh, in addition to that, there are county dollars that are also available for various projects. So seeking out, um, all of the sources that you can is, is a way to deal with infrastructure. Um, going back to the other question, um, because I, I wanna unpack to you a little bit more. Like, how do you get people to engage? And, and this is across the board, not, not Democrat, not Republican. Like, how do you get people to engage? Connect the dots for them. Connect the dots with whatever their issues are and how this person, having them there or not there, impacts them. Just last month, um, and the month before, we got TPS, which is Temporary Protective Status for Venice Williams and patients, which is a big deal in South Florida, right? Um, and that's something we had been advocating for under the prior administration. He basically took it away. Uh, but under this administration, it got done. That's a palpable difference. Where you have ones telling you, okay, they're gonna work with you. And then others like, nah, we don't want you there. Those, those are significant messages. Now, is the entire Democratic Party or the Republican Party a lot of it? Absolutely not. Um, several, we, we serve the day delegation, I might share the day delegation. And a lot of times in the day delegation, we agree on a lot of issues, right? Um, across party lines. But that's not necessarily, that's not necessarily the case. We don't necessarily share the same ideas and things throughout the entire state. So this is a, this is a dance of trying to figure out, because for me, the focus is always what's best for the people, right? All the people. What's best for the people? But sometimes, what we've seen in Tallahassee is kind of like a Stockholm syndrome, is the best way I can describe it, where you just fall, if, if you're on a particular party, you just fall offline. You don't have the opportunity to engage in what's best for the people because this is what you're told is best for the people and that's what you're gonna do. Period, end of story. Um, and that's unfortunate because it creates a lot of deadlock that we see where, and it's just not helpful for people, like regardless of political party. So, um, connecting the dots, whether it's issues like affordable housing, like literally, just, just take a moment right now, you don't have to say, ah, ah, just think to yourself, what are your top three issues that you care about policy-wise? Any top three, right? Access to healthcare, for, for healthcare. Food insecurity, affordable housing. Whatever your issues are, immigration, whatever your issues are, I guarantee you, it makes a difference who's in office. If you care about Black Lives Matter, if you don't care about Black Lives Matter. All, all of those things are directly impacted by who is in office. So we need to help people connect the dots. And we need to do, um, what my colleague said is just do it anyway. When we looked across and saw some states that flipped, um, you know, whether it's red to blue or blue to red or whatever was going on, it's people who showed up in droves. People showed up in droves across the board. There are record numbers across the board. But notwithstanding the obstacles that are erected, notwithstanding all of those things, because if we don't do it, if we don't protect our democracy, and this is something that we've seen time and time again throughout the entire world, it will fail. Because all, all it takes for people to regress is to not fight for what you have and take it for granted. Because the other folks will be quick to take it away from you. That's believed, like, it's, like, not even a question. Like, you wanna say something?
Just, just to go back to what can we do in terms of infrastructure? And we, we sit here, we serve, and, and you're being asked, you, you elected us to represent you in Tallahassee. So we serve as partners with your local elected officials as well. So it's, it's definitely incumbent upon, uh, locally to make the ask. And then it's incumbent upon us to fight the fight to get the funding in Tallahassee. And when we can't get the funding in Tallahassee, to find other, to help you find other mechanisms by which, uh, to get that funding. So we serve a, as your partners. And so as you heard Representative Joseph say, although we weren't able to get some funding in the budget, we do, we do know avenues by which you can still get funding in other places. And so we serve to help you in that process, to, to, to walk with you in that process, to find funds and, and, and then for you to use those funds in a fiscally responsible way. So that when we go back again to talk about getting funds, we can say, listen, this is what we did with our last ask, and this is what we're looking to do with this ask. So we are your partners and, and we try to be the best partners that we can.
Thank you. And I just want to say one moment, Sarah, that, um, I, I just wanna emphasize again, um, even though I'm newly elected, about two years, I'm working with one of the best state representatives. Um, I can tell you that almost anything that I've asked within their power, they've done. Um, one example of that is some of you, actually, I see in the room here, have been vaccinated right here at this site. We partnered up with these two, um, state reps to make sure that we had a Pfizer vaccine here and made it available for whatever citizen, um, wanted, wanted it. Um, and I, a lot of those questions, I knew the answer, I'm asking publicly because I want you to know that they are fighting. And, and trust me, they know, I text them and call them every day, that I'm asking. And I just want you to understand, um, the process, um, that happens. Sometimes just because we're not getting, that doesn't mean that we're not doing the work, we're not asking. Is there, like we've mentioned several times, they're in a minority party. So sometimes I'm just like, well, what's the point? The point is still there. They just explained a crime bill where they actually were able to negotiate that, okay, don't arrest our kindergarteners. Okay, you can arrest my second graders, right? But, I mean, it sounds bad, but at least you're getting steps. And so that's, that's why, um, it's important. So Sarah, you have a question?
I mean, just actually related to that, one of the things that to me was really concerning this last session was the efforts that were made to restrict the powers of our municipal governments. And we particularly, we saw what happened. I don't know if you guys talked about that earlier before I arrived, but, you know, I mean, we saw a specific example of what happened in Key West, but it happened over and over again. What kinds of means can you guys do to help prevent that? And what do you need from us locally to help you, you know, push on those issues? Because I, I mean, that's just crazy, it's so concerning. You know, time and again, it feels like any efforts we make, even here in our city, to do small things to help our community, you know, things get sidelined by the fact that there's limits put on us at the same time.
And I'm gonna tell you that we, we're there to voice those concerns. And we do, you see us voicing in committee, you see us voice those concerns, eh, on the floor of the House. And we need you guys to come to Tallahassee. We need you to amplify our voice and let, and let them know that we do have people back who are serious about these issues, so serious that they're willing to come here and tell you themselves that these are issues that are important and that impact them. And we're two, both people who agree that local control is important. And so we do what we can to prevent the limitations that are oftentimes placed on, on local control. Uh, but we need you to amplify our voices.
Maybe I'm just too honest of a person, but, um, if I'm being honest, the unofficial answer is elect more Democrats. Um, and help elect more Democrats. Because the, the, the current Republicans don't care. And they, they proactively look for things that local governments do like the situation in Key West to just kind of be a bully. Quite frankly, I don't know how else to describe it. Um, so if I'm giving you an honest, straightforward answer, it's to help elect more Democrats.
We know it's not, we know that the city is not partisan. We know that, but...
I already said my own self.
But, but, but let me emphasize it, that, that it's true. Because we deal with a lot of hypocrisy in Tallahassee. A lot, and a lot of it is really hard to swallow. Because whenever there's an attempt to limit state power, the argument is always for the people elected us to represent them. But when we make that same argument for why we shouldn't be bothering the local control, when we say the same people who elected us elected them, so the people wanted them to run their cities and their counties either way that they're doing it. You, you, you hear all, all types of arguments where we're the state and we're responsible for everybody in the state and things like that. The, the hypocrisy of Tallahassee is, under the current control, is what's the most difficult thing, uh, to take. And, and we agree on most of the bills that come through Tallahassee. And, and people said that before I went to Tallahassee, and I saw it to be true while, while I was in Tallahassee. The large portion of the bills that come before the floor are passed bipartisan. My issue is the bills that really, that I feel really impact the people, that really have the ability to change how we live and the quality of life that we're able to attain, is a take it or leave it type scenario in Tallahassee. I mean, it, it was said by one of, one of our colleagues on the other side. When we asked him on HB one, no one asks for this bill, why are you passing it? When we asked him about SB ninety, no one asks for this bill, why are you passing it? So when, I want you to hear this. So when Representative Charles Joseph says you need to vote in more Democrats, it's because when we asked these questions to the other side, they said we didn't because we can. They said we didn't because we can. We didn't because it's seventy-two to forty-eight. Or seventy-eight to forty-two. They, they, they said we didn't because we can. So I think it's incumbent upon us to elect more Democrats so they can.
If even ones Republican were...
No, it's party line, party line.
More questions? All right. Not funny. I mean, here's the thing, for, as a coping mechanism, as, as a coping mechanism, like, like, it's so, I, I'll give you a couple stories and then, and then I guess we're gonna start to wrap it up. But, you know, he mentioned the, you know, come to Tallahassee, amplify, more to show up. There was a committee meeting, people came from all over the state and lined up. And do you know, this man just said, we don't have time for commentary. And they didn't get to say anything. Because they don't, they don't even care what their actual voices are. They don't even care about pretending sometimes. Not all the time, right? There are exceptions to every rule. I work with some people that I really respect in Tallahassee across the aisle and some that unfortunately, by their actions, I cannot respect. And that's a problem, right? So, you know, when you're faced with such, um, things that just don't make sense. I'll give you one last example. There was a, in the last days, some bill, I don't even know what the bill was, but there was a concern, a local government concern about what's the impact on local government and they're really didn't deal with a particular issue. And in his initial presentation, this, this, this young man got up and represented to the body that these groups were supportive and this and this and this. I was like, oh, that's great, because, you know, I, I was with the concern that I had. I'm glad they were able to work out their issues. So I stand up and I ask questions. Okay, so tell us about who you spoke to and, um, what issues you were able to work out. So I can make sure that, you know, that what I was worried about was addressed. And then he gives me this vague answer, oh, yeah, people, uh, I was like... So then the lawyer in me comes out. And I'm like, okay, well, who specifically did you speak with? Or what, and what issues? Or can you identify anything for this body since you just represented them? And then the speaker interjects, oh, I said, I said, I was like, respectfully, um, I asked a question and he provided an answer, but the answer was not responsive. So I'm gonna try to rephrase. So I rephrased the question. And then he comes up with some other, oh, with some emails. I was like, all right, great. So I'm gonna stop questions, I'm gonna come over, maybe you can show me the emails. So I literally go walk over to his desk. And then somehow in there, he said, oh, yeah, I'll show you later. And I'm thinking, we're about to vote now. So if you're telling me you're gonna vote later, and I was so, my feelings were hurt. And you don't know my feelings were hurt? My feelings were hurt because I thought he was telling the truth. I thought he had integrity. I thought, I thought, I, I thought, I believed that that mattered. But I recognized that we were not in a court of law. There is no obligation to actually tell the truth. And he was gonna do what he wanted to do anyway, and everybody knew what time it was. And here I was, trying to actually help him. But then I realized that we were not on the same team in terms of honesty. And that is disconcerting regardless of political party.
Another example of the hypocrisy is that they came and they said that we wanna protect girls in sports, right? So we're gonna ban certain folks from being able to participate in sports. And we're doing this because we support women. That was the message that they gave to the people on the floor. We support women. And then turned around and said, women don't have a choice as to what to do with their bodies and decisions that they make to abort. The same party who said that we're here to protect women, turned around and said, women do not get to decide what to do with their bodies. That's the, that's the level of hypocrisy that we deal with in Tallahassee. And they saw no conflict with the messaging in those two bills that they, that they sponsored. And, and so those becomes the difficult things that, that we deal with in Tallahassee.
Someone else has a question in the audience? I have the last question that I think affects that I've been wanting to address. It's a bill, um, that, I forget the bill number, but the bill that addresses, um, local businesses. Um, and people having, um, whatever it is, home businesses, that's what it took to address. Right? Could you elaborate on that? And you have...
The home-based business, right? I think it fell this way.
Did you?
Yeah, it fell this way. Yeah, I mean, it, it was a, it, I know that this was a bill that local folks, or, um, local elected officials were very concerned with because it basically would allow anybody to have whatever business, basically, they wanted out of their homes. So I know we, and we already have locally issues with Airbnbs and what happens in Airbnbs. And so the concern was, you know, you could have, you know, CrossFit, CrossFit U, and, and all, and all types. And they don't believe that the local processes that we have in terms of ordinances and code enforcement and stuff like that was sufficient enough to be able to prevent some of the conduct that they were worried about. Uh, but the, under the guise of property rights, the bill was passed, uh, through the, uh, through the House. But I believe that the bill was defeated in the Senate. But yes, if, 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 if that bill, if, if I'm wrong, that bill, that bill is going to the governor, then it will allow people to, you can't, you can't, you have to treat at-home businesses like you treat any other business, basically. That, that's, that's the nature of the bill.
So, no, because, so, uh, this bill, uh, is HB four oh three. Um, pursuant to their whole power rules, local governments currently have restrictions in place designed to balance someone's desire to open a small business in their home with the interests of the neighbors and the community in mind, right? So this keeps you from having, let's say, a strip club next door or a tire shop, you know, all, just whatever. Just from having just any old thing next to you. Um, the home-based business bill sought to remove this regulatory authority from local governments at risk for the uniqueness and characteristics of residential properties and districts, um, the possibility of neighborhood health and, um, safety and a gutting of home rule, of, of the home rules and link process, right? So, um, basically, it was preempting local government from regulating all kinds of stuff. So regulations on noise, vibration, heat, smoke, dust, glare, fumes, or noxious odors cannot be more strict, more restrictive for home-based businesses than other residential property, right? Um, and it did a couple of other things. I'm not gonna get into all of those details, but that's, that's the bill. And it looks like, um, it made it through, unfortunately, so...
And a lot of the argument was that there are already things in place to, um, prevent some concerns that people had. So they pointed out that there's already code enforcement... So they pointed out that there's already code enforcement, that there's already nuisance laws, right? So they're saying that through code enforcement and through nuisance laws and things of this nature, somebody on the floor said, you know, they can have, you know, chemicals in their homes that are not safe for people in the community, and the response was, if it's illegal generally, or it's regulated generally, it would still be regulated and still be illegal with regards to the home-based businesses, so they still wouldn't be allowed to have it. So they felt that code and laws that are already in place would handle businesses that were, I guess, illegal or had, that would have a negative impact through the pieces of nuisance. But, you know, the problem we came is that there are businesses that will fall within the laws that would still be disruptive to other property rights, and people have the right to peaceful, quiet enjoyment of their own property, and some home-based businesses could interfere with that. And although people have a cause of action against that business that they did, they felt like the process was too arduous, the argument against that process of going through that is too arduous, and that issue remained with their local control. Unfortunately, the other side disagreed, and the bill looks like the bill passed both sides.
Yeah, so it bounced back in something called messaging. So what happens is, the House has a version, the Senate has a version. The House version was significantly worse than the Senate version, and then in messaging, they sent back the House version to the Senate. Then it all hecked for loose, but it ended up passing the House 7741 and the Senate 1918. I'm trying to look now to see if the governor has signed it or not, because he may or may not have, let's see, Friday, requested House to return. Yeah, so I'm not sure where the final version stands. So if it was the final version, it would have been SB 266. So we can look at that and I can get back to you, but...
The governor hasn't signed it yet, it looks like. So you can ask the governor to veto it.
So that's where you have all municipal rules, like should a municipality limit entirely home-based businesses, I'm sorry, should a municipality limit all home-based businesses? It would preempt their limits, and it would allow home-based businesses now, and municipalities that don't allow that?
So let me break down specifically what it does. So the characteristics that I identified, any local regulations on noise, vibration, heat, smoke, dust, glare, fumes, or noxious odors may not be more restrictive for a home-based business than any other residential property. It requires local regulations of home-based businesses, parking may not be more stringent than other, so whatever the parking is in your neighborhood, that's fine for the home-based business too. It needs to be fine, which we know is ridiculous for anybody who handles parking at the local government level. Prohibits a local government from regulating the hours of operation of a home-based business. And a home-based business may not be prohibited, restricted, regulated, or licensed in a manner different from any other businesses in the government's local jurisdiction. So that's kind of like a short summary. If you're really curious, if you want extra credit for those watching at home, you go to myfloridahouse.gov and you just type in the bill number, HB 403, the Senate companion, it's SB 266. I don't believe, anyway, so that's the information on that particular bill.
So basically, it allows home-based businesses to operate like they're not a commercial enterprise, and just like, it's just regular property rights, and it's just another property on the block.
Well, I would like to thank both of you, State Representative Christopher Benjamin and our beloved, State Representative, also beloved, but our State Representative, beloved, you're getting it, State Representative Dottie Joseph, thank you so much for this informative session. Thank you for just being a true partner to North Miami. I continue, I will continue to work with both of you, and I just love what we're doing together. So thank you so much for your time, and we'll keep working to be the people.